So, everyone, welcome to the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Conley. I'll be presiding over today's workshop. I'd like to first call on our illustrious and wonderful clerk for the roll call.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Wonderful job, wonderful job. Now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, I know we've got a really long one. All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve, second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Blasberg, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right, let's move right into new business. Manager?
Item number one is evaluation of our boards and commissions, and we are back to the head or clerk. Val Shugard.
Get the presentation.
All right, illustrious.
Illustrious.
That's like you say in bad breath, it's fine.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'm gonna go ahead and thank you in advance for your patience. Bear with me, I'm not used to being on this side of it. I'm very content being on the opposite side behind the scenes with you all, but... So, we're here today to talk about our boards and commissions. Just to... To bring us all to the same page, we're here because we've been hearing some things from board members, from you all, from staff liaisons about inability to meet quorum, some requests for support, better understanding of procedures and guidelines, things like that. So, we thought it would be a good idea maybe to slow it down and take a good, long look at our boards and commissions. Today, our objective, what we want to do is, we want to take a look at the boards and commissions, we want to define them, and then we want to narrow our focus on just those commissions that we'd like to evaluate. We're gonna talk about some of the things that we're currently doing right now to support, and then propose the next steps. So first, defining boards and commissions, they are boards that are created by state statute and also by local ordinances and resolutions. They're created to meet the goals and priorities that you all have set forth, and they can also fulfill some statutory obligations that are imposed by the state. It's important to understand the framework of what we are currently working with. So, things that would inform the work, informing of the work of the board would be those ordinance and resolutions that were adopted by council creating them. Also, your boards and commissions policy, that's something that is adopted by you all and amended by you all as you see fit. And then, at a finer level, the bylaws and rules of procedures for each of the boards and commissions. It's also important to understand just how this all works, because there's a lot of players in this, in our boards and commissions. So first, of course, we have you all, the city council. You create these boards, you appoint the members, you also serve as the city liaisons. Then you have the actual board members that carry out the work. Again, this is work that you all have to find and set forth for the board. Next, we have the clerk's office, that's me and my illustrious staff, helping you to manage the organization of these boards, keep up with the terms, resignation, appointments, recruitment. Next, we have the staff liaison. I can't say enough about our staff liaisons, they're great, they're hands-on, they work with these boards, and they provide that administrative support. It's also important right here just to note that staff liaisons aren't just really, you know, picked willy-nilly. It is a position that's defined by their job description. Next, we have the city manager's office, and they pretty much control all the resources that help to make this possible. They help manage the staff, they also manage the facilities where they meet, they provide publicity. Everything surrounding the boards and commissions is managed by the manager's office. And finally, we have the city attorney's office, and they also play a really important part. They make sure that we're legal. They will help you out with your boards and commissions policy, writing it, amending it as you request. And they can also help out with the advisory boards, helping to write and amend their bylaws and procedures as requested. So, we do have seventeen boards and commissions. I think it's really important, though, to understand the distinctions between each. So, I have to say and really thank the manager's office, the attorney's office, this has been like a group project, and this is what we've come up with, categories for our boards and commissions. Again, we have seventeen, and they can be categorized by these types: quasi-judicial, autonomous, and advisory. Quasi-judicial means that they make findings of fact. I think the most important thing to remember about quasi-judicial boards is when they make these determinations, these decisions, those decisions bypass us completely. If they have to be appealed, they're gonna go to, they're gonna go to court. And they also can have an advisory role. Autonomous boards, it's important to understand autonomous boards, what we mean by that. So, you all do make some appointments to these boards, but the most important thing to understand about these boards is they are managed outside of us, okay? So, we make appointments, they're created by the state. It's very rigid as far as what kind of changes can be made. Any kind of changes you want to make would actually have to go before the state. And again, big emphasis on they are managed by other agencies outside of the city. Yes, yeah, and a little further into the presentation, we will take a look at all of the boards and commissions under these categories, okay? Next, we have advisory commissions, and for the sake of this process, these are the boards that we will really be focusing on. These are the ones where you, the city council, have control over these boards, these are the ones that you create. It's important to note that these are strictly advisory, they do not set policy, they don't make statements or act on behalf of the city of Greenville, because that's you all. What they're gonna do is they're gonna make, they're gonna make some recommendations, and we've got a couple of pathways how that can reach you. We do have a communications policy that's in our boards and commissions policy, so they can follow that, or they can present that information to you at their annual presentation that they do every year. So, before we get into the breakdown of the different types and the boards and commissions that are under these different types, I think it's important to understand that there are appointment schedules for some of these boards, okay? So, in two thousand ten, there was a boards and commissions policy that was passed by the city council at that time, and in that policy, they outlined some appointment schedules for some of their boards, just to ensure that we have that diversity, that these boards are truly representative of the whole city, okay? So, the rule is, there is a rule with this, I know sometimes it can get confusing, so, since I'm up here, I wanted to use this as my opportunity to maybe help shed some light on the thought process and the rules, how this works. So, boards with appointment schedules, there's a mix sometimes of permanent seats and rotating seats. The rule is, if there are six seats or under, that means all those seats are gonna rotate amongst yourselves, okay? So, all, you're gonna take turns each time a term is up, making those appointments and recommendations. If there's at least seven city seats, then that means each one of you gets a permanently assigned seat, and anything outside of that seven will rotate, okay? All right, so again, we're gonna take a look at the different types of boards. First board that we're gonna take a look at are the quasi-judicial boards. We've got this grid here just to help give you a quick glance to understand some of the information, like the creation date, number of members, the appointing authority, and whether or not the city seats, that's this category right here, Councilmember Lewis, the city seats, if they are assigned or if they rotate, and also the length of terms. One thing that I will say, it's really important, I would like you to note the creation date for each of these. So, going right through, first board is Board of Adjustment, created in nineteen eighty-one. There are eleven members. Of those eleven members, appointing authority would be the city. We have nine seats on that board, counting his two. And again, looking at the nine seats for the city, seven of those seats are permanently assigned, and two seats will rotate amongst yourselves. Terms on that board, three years. Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission, is established in nineteen eighty-eight. Number of members is ten, appointing authority, all of those belong to the city, and they are all made by the city council liaison. Terms here are three years. Okay, next, we have the autonomous boards. Another point that I did not bring up previously, but I feel like it is really important to note here, these boards, when you appoint members, you are essentially appointing the board of directors. A board of director has got a lot of latitude and agency and authority as far as what they can do. That includes the hiring, the evaluation, and I'll leave it there, hiring, evaluation of like directors and key members of staff. So, keep that in mind when you make appointments to these boards. Okay, so we have the Firefighters Relief Fund Committee, established in nineteen oh seven. There's five members of those seats, two of them belong to the city, two of them are nominated by the fire rescue department, one is appointed by the insurance commissioner. There isn't a liaison to that seat, which means it's wide open. Any member of council can recommend the reappointment or appointment of a member when terms come up. Length of terms here is two years. Next, we have the Greenville Utilities Commission, created in nineteen forty-one, eight members. The way that breaks down, six of those seats belong to the city, two belong to the county, and again, going back to our rule about rotating seats versus permanent seats, six seats, so that means they all rotate. Length of terms here is three years. Next, we have the Greenville Housing Authority, established in nineteen sixty-one, number of members is seven. Appointing authority, city has six seats, residents commissioner always has one. So, it's always important to note that they must always have a member that's represented by those communities that benefit from the housing authority. So, taking a look at the city seats, again, we have six. Five of those are gonna rotate, I've got one marked down as permanent, because it's also, this is state law. One seat must always be appointed by the mayor. The mayor always has to have one seat on that board. So, the remaining five will rotate amongst the rest of the city council. Terms last five years on this board. Next, we have the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority, created in nineteen sixty-seven, number of members is eight. Appointing authority is between the city and the county. We have four seats. It's important to note here that of those four seats, one of them is an ex officio seat, meaning that they hold this seat by virtue of their office. This is the city council liaison that the mayor appoints. So, once the mayor makes a city council liaison appointment, there are also a member of this board. And it's important to note, too, that they do have voting abilities. So, one is ex officio, the remaining three seats will rotate amongst the city council. Length of term is four years. Next, we have the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Creation date is nineteen eighty-seven, number of members is eleven. City has five seats, county has five, the Chamber of Commerce has one, and all five seats are appointed by the city council liaison. Length of terms here is three years. Finally, in this category, we have the Shepton Memorial Library Board. That's not a typo. The creation date there is blank. We have been studiously trying to find a creation date. One day it talks about, it would be great to form a library board, and then the next thing we see, library board was formed, but it doesn't give a specific date. We've been looking at this since Greg Needham was in office. All that being said, though, eleven members, six members are appointed by the city, three members appointed by the county, one by Bethel, one by Wonderville. City council liaison assigned to this board makes all of these appointments. Length of term is three years.
Valerie, I have a question before you leave out.
Yep.
So, with some of these boards, you've got three seats that belong to the city. I'm looking at the airport authority, and they're four years each. It could be four years before a certain district has, is able to select a member for that board, is that right?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
So, let me take a look. So, that one, in other words, it's real hard for, it's, it, it's real hard, it seems to me it would be difficult to have the diverse representation we're looking for, because you get one shot every four years.
And again, I think it's important to understand that we're working within the guidelines, the charter.
Yeah, okay, I understand that, yeah, okay.
In that charter, that, that rotation is a reflection of not only the number of people, not the number of individuals that the city appoints, but also the years that they appoint. So, yeah, you're right, I mean, it could take a long time for it to rotate back into a district seat.
And same with the utilities and... Okay, good, thanks for explaining that.
And then not, not to say that this is the reason for it, but there is a lot of continuity in services that you try to keep on these boards. But by the same token, you shouldn't have somebody who's up there for twenty-five years.
That's right. Or certain districts not having the opportunity to appoint, you know, to, I'm looking, you know, that board, the authority, the airport authority, and then looking at Utilities Commission, too. But I understand these are not set, these policies are not even set by us, so... We just, we deal with them as such.
Very limited in what we can do for this, okay?
Oh, yeah, we get our calls all the time. DeNay and staff get calls about the housing authority all the time. We have to be real clear that these are autonomous. I mean, there's only so much, I mean, we want to, we want to hold them accountable, but there's only so much we can do, because they do not answer to us. The city council appoints their board, ultimately they appoint, that, that board, they should report to that board.
And their statutes are set, in some cases, by the state, the composition.
That's right.
Or other agencies, okay.
Moving on, we come to our final category. This is the advisory category. We have the Affordable Housing Loan Committee, established in nineteen ninety-four. Number of members is eight. All appointed by the city, all appointed by the liaison assigned to that board. Length of term is three years. Next, we have the, excuse me, Environmental Advisory Commission, created in nineteen seventy-five. Number of members is seven, appointing authority is the city. The city council liaison to that board makes all of the appointments. I think it's important, too, to understand that, again, created back in nineteen seventy-five, and at that time, there were some very specific requirements and criteria for those seats. They wanted folks in there with expertise, so you might have like one at-large member, but also maybe an educator, a doctor. But that's, again, when it was created in nineteen seventy-five. Terms here are three years. Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission. They were listed also on the, on the quasi-judicial slide, but again, just, they also have some advisory duties and functions outside of their quasi-judicial responsibilities. So, that's why we listed them here. Established in nineteen eighty-eight, number of members is ten. All of these seats are appointed by the city and appointed by the liaison assigned to this board. Terms here are three years. Next, we have the Human Relations Council, established in nineteen seventy-two. Number of members is ten. Appointing authority is the city. City council liaison to that board makes all of the appointments. Terms are three years. Next, we have the Multimodal Transportation Commission. This is probably the baby amongst all of the boards and commissions, established in twenty twenty. Numbers of members, seven, all appointed by the city, all appointed by the city council liaison assigned to this board. Length of terms is two years. And just really quick to note, I think it's important to understand how we got to form the Multimodal Transportation Commission. This is a new process for us. We had actually initiated this process, at least since the time that I've been here, back in two thousand eighteen, taking a look at these boards and commissions. Nothing new, I mean, same of the same issues that we're experiencing and facing today, problems meeting quorum, high turnover. So, at that time, we were trying to take a look and see what were some steps that we could do, maybe just to kind of help support those boards. And what we found was that there was two boards, the Greenville Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission and the Public Transportation and Parking Commission. Some of the duties and the work that was set out kind of overlapped. So, at that time, we thought it would make the best sense, since both boards were having problems meeting quorum, to combine. And so, I just wanted to add that quick note here about how we got the Multimodal Transportation Commission. Next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission, established in nineteen fifty-six. Number of members is twelve. Of those twelve seats, the city has appointments for nine of them, the county does three. Seven of those nine seats are permanently assigned out to the mayor and city council, two of them will rotate. Length of terms here is three years. Next, we have the Police Community Relations Committee, established in nineteen ninety-six. Number of members is seven, appointed by the city, and these are permanently assigned to each one of you. Length of terms here is two years. Next, we have the Recreation and Parks Commission, established in nineteen fifty-one. Number of members is nine. All of these are appointed by the city, so seven of those are permanently assigned, and two of them will rotate amongst you all. Length of terms here is three years. And then we have the Youth Council, established in two thousand and five. Number of members is twenty. I think it's important just to note that these, this board is for high school students, both public high school students, homeschool students, private school students. All appointed by the city, all appointed by the liaison assigned to that board. Length of term is one year. And finally, went a little bit out of alphabetical order, but I've got the Neighborhood Advisory Board there at the bottom, just because they're a little unique. So, they were established in two thousand and eight. Currently, the number of members is ten, and the appointing authority is Neighborhood Association. So, city council, you all don't make any appointments to this one board. The Neighborhood Associations will meet amongst themselves and actually nominate and appoint the members. And I think, just to note, right now, ten members, and they currently only have five active members. There isn't a liaison assigned to this board. Length of term is two years. So, this is part one of the very interesting slide. We, we did some research, we reached out and spoke to some of the staff at the UNC School of Government, a really great resource for local government. They do have some workshops there that are focused specifically on this, analyzing and evaluating advisory boards. So, they shared a really great flow chart with us, and I just want to go through it piece by piece with you all. So, in the red here, you'll see the elected board, and then what you all do is, you set the purpose. You create the purpose, and then you appoint the members, and that leads us to the middle over here in the green, that's the advisory board. Now, the advisory board, they're the ones that are gonna do the work, and so they're supported by staff. They will also, you know, the expectation is, they can also do research on their own, maybe tap into some expertise, maybe by virtue of, you know, the office that they hold, maybe some of the contacts that they know, also reach out to other members of the community for that input, and that's how they get the work done. And then finally, what we come to is the results, and those results are presented to you all, the council, and it's up to you at that time just to evaluate, to make sure that the results line up to the expectations that you have for that board. So, results will come out during those annual presentations to you all, the mayor and council. And at that time, either you can do a quick realignment, or you can, you know, go ahead and express your appreciation for the work that they've done. So, again, just to look at this chart, I think it's really important, though, that what I really want to focus on is the purpose. And so, just to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing right now to help address some of these problems I started out with and I told you about. On our side, we've sent out some surveys to you all. City council still collecting some of the responses there. The intent, the purpose of the surveys is just to get a feel from you about if you feel your boards are effective, if they're doing the work that you feel they should be doing. Also, manager's office is working on an administrative procedure for staff, for the liaisons, just to set that expectation on our side, what we expect to see, how we expect for them to help and support these boards and commissions. Also creating templates that they can use for annual reports, presentations, a work plan, just to keep everything really streamlined. And we are also working on some training that we can provide to the staff liaisons, that they in turn can provide to the board members. Okay, so what I would like to do is honestly be very intentional about this whole thing and look at it over the course of a few months, and I think it would be really helpful if we could have a smaller subcommittee of the city council just to meet with staff, to go over some of these pieces. Again, reviewing the purpose of the boards and commissions where they, when they were created, and comparing it to the work that we've seen put out through their annual reports. Also evaluate some things like attendance and meeting forums, number of members, and then also looking at the boards and commissions policy for opportunities, maybe for some improvements and updates.
And I would add on that slide that it's, you know, you can evaluate what the stated purpose is and what is being accomplished, to see if it's accomplishing the purpose. But I think there's also some value given at the timeframe, many, many years ago, that some of these commissions were created, is to also evaluate, is that the purpose that they need to be filling today? Because the purpose that was, that was identified maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago, we don't live in the same environment that we did twenty, twenty-five years ago. We, we might need a little bit more community engagement than we're getting in some, in some of these roles, rather than just acting as, you know, I'm not gonna bunch of detail, but anyway, you see what I'm saying? We need to evaluate not only their current purpose, are they even filling the current purpose, but should that, should that be the purpose?
Well, and I know we're gonna have a discussion, a conversation, and I, I just want to say before we do that, Michael, you really hit on something that... I did do some surveys, I did a bank audit lunch today, and I know, nobody's had a chance to look at them, because it was very last minute. But as I was thinking about this in an intentional way, and I do think it's important for us to be intentional when we look at these, that was the first thing that came to mind, was that I think one of the reasons, if not the key reason, that we're having trouble meeting quorum and having interest and having a lot of turnover is that I think the, the mission and the vision of many of our boards is just antiquated. They have, they are, they are no longer, they no longer have relevant missions or even a relevant structure. And I think that people feel that they get on these boards and they don't have the opportunity to be engaged and active and, and, and participating in a lively, engaged way, and it's not the liaison's fault, it's not our fault, it's that the boards were set up for a different time and expectation.
And let's just, I mean, and let's, let's lay it on tape, and as part, as part of this evaluation, you need to also look at the number of individuals on the board, how they rotate. Should it be all just the liaison, or should it rotate to give more representation? The, the role of, of the staff member, because ultimately, that staff member answers back to the city manager's office, and that's not the only, that's not only the duty they have. In some situations, I guess we'd say, sometimes it feels like our staff member actually works for the commission, and they don't. I mean, so it's, so we need to, we need to look at this from all facets, and every single one of these commissions are different. You can't just throw them together into one big bucket and just say, well, I'm gonna do it all this. You really need to evaluate them individually and put a lot of thought into them. And I hate to say that we've already, it could be looked at that we've already done that, it would have lasted several years, but ultimately, you know, I wasn't here as city manager, DeNay wasn't here as assistant city manager, you know, Valerie hasn't always been the clerk, so I think you're a whole new council. So, I think this is a good opportunity to maybe take a more comprehensive, if we're gonna do this, let's do it the right way. Let's just don't go through the motions and throw something together, just put some thought in it.
And Valerie, did I understand that, that as far as the sort of detail work, you want to have small meetings to go over specific details?
Yep, and that leads me to my next slide. So, this is, you know, the expectation for that smaller subcommittee. So, it is a time commitment, and what we're asking is that the subcommittee meet with us, the staff, that being Michael, Emmanuel, myself, our designees, on a monthly basis for the duration of this process.
Everybody meet with, everybody, all council members meet in small groups once a month?
No, this small committee that...
Oh, so city staff, okay.
This small subcommittee, and so just to make sure that we're all on the same page, because what I'm asking here today is I'm asking for the assignment of a small subcommittee of the city council, okay? So, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear, that's, that's the ask right here, okay?
And those, and those city council members would work with staff to evaluate each individual commission and make any recommendations back to the full council for consideration. So, that, so this, this is just only, this is a recommendation from this group, and a lot of times, gotta be spent... And a lot of time's got to be spent in, in behind the scenes evaluating this. This is, this is a methodical process. It's not just, because ultimately, again, we don't want, I don't want to be sitting here doing this five years from now, or whoever's here doing this five years from now.
So, because when we say a couple of months, what, what are we talking about? Because I do feel like we've been talking about this for a long time. So what are we doing, like June, July?
So I've got a, a slide that addresses like the proposed timeline.
Okay.
So again, just...
And I'm sorry, for a little context, Michael, you were here, but nobody else was, maybe the mayor was. Rick Sliely kind of started this, but it was kind of a unilateral process with Rick, and I think, bless his heart. And I think, if I understand correctly, the intention, because when I got on council, I was like, well, Rick, I want to, I'd like to be part of this too. And I think the intention is to, to have more representation, how this is done, rather than just...
Yeah, I think the intention here is just to create like this more formalized way of approaching this. So just being very transparent, just being very upfront and clear about how this is going to go, you know, for everyone.
And, and let, again, we're going to be drawn, so if, if we were to do this as a full, full board, full council, then that's what we would be doing every single workshop in the next several months. I mean, just going through these one by one. This group would be working, meeting like on a weekly basis, by week to basis, over the next two, three months. And I will, I will, still thunder here, we'll go through the process.
You're fine. Group project. So again, time commitment. You're going to have to meet with staff on a monthly basis, just to have these meetings to evaluate, like the City Manager was saying, taking a look at these boards individually, one by one. Also, the expectation would be peer-to-peer communication, and that basically means like if there's any input that needs to be received from your fellow council members, we would appreciate and lean on you all for that support to do that, and to bring that feedback back to the full group. And then finally, again, just like the City Manager stated, working with us to formulate some recommendations to bring back to the City Council for your review and approval. So, I think it's important to also be in the right frame of mind as we're thinking about this, for the smaller subcommittee and for all of us, about some questions to consider as we're evaluating these boards and commissions. It's already been hinted at, alluded to, referenced in this presentation, but are the reasons that the boards and commissions, the reasons that they were created, are they still valid today? Again, you know, I'd ask you all to note the creation date for a lot of those boards and commissions. It's been quite a number of years between then and now. Next is the board and commission producing the expected results. And if they're not, what are some opportunities? What are some things maybe we can do to help them get them where you want them to be? Also too, again, so much time has passed since the date when some of these boards were first created until now, you know, the advent of technology. Are there other avenues available to achieve community engagement? I think we're very lucky, we have a community that's very engaged, and they know how to reach us. And finally, the piece that is dear to me is, is this a good use of the volunteers' time and efforts? I mean, you know, we're your staff, we're going to do what we're tasked to do, but I think it's a little bit hard to ask community members as volunteers to come and kind of just participate in these boards and commissions if it feels like they're not truly making some kind of impact. So it's also important to consider their experience in this.
And I think, and I'm sorry, but this is something I feel extremely passionate about. I think if, if, if volunteers are not engaged and showing up and wanting to serve on these commissions, and if they, if, if they do not feel it's a good use of their time, I think we need to turn that mirror on ourselves. And we need to say, this gets back to Michael's point, my point, we've got to restructure. Because I think the community wants to be engaged, I think the community is able to be engaged, and I think it's our job to, to craft the platform that allows them to do that.
And I'm glad you said that, because ultimately, let's just say that we evaluate one of these commissions and we redefine that purpose. And I'm just making it up. But it's not enough just to redefine the purpose. What does that actually mean? What are some examples of deliverables that we would like this commission to work on that would meet the objectives of that purpose? Because if you, you look at the members, the members can come up with their own idea of what that purpose means, but the City Council's the one who owns that purpose. So we need to give them examples of what, this is what you should be working on, so they're not out, so they're not out there working on something that is either meaningless or that they, they don't feel abiding to. And worst, worst case scenario, it doesn't even meet the objective of what council wants. So, I mean, that's why it's not, it's not enough just to say this is what the purpose is, but let's give examples of what you should be working on to meet that purpose, and I will stand on this all day long. These commissions do not, they do not answer, I mean, they, they answer to council, they do not stand for council. They do not represent council. You, you were the ones elected. So, anything that comes back through that, the commission should be recommendations or functions that the, the council has given them authority to move forward, but they can't be just acting like they're a council.
And I love the idea of deliverables. That, that really summarizes what I think is missing from many of our commissions. We've got really engaged people who want to create something for us, and I think they've not been given that opportunity.
Okay. So, final slide. So proposed next steps and a timeline associated with it. So really would like to get that subcommittee formed this month if we can. Just following our model with the City Council liaisons, the mayor makes the appointment, the assignments for those liaisons. So I would be asking the mayor to make an assignment of three members to work on this committee. Mayor Connolly, the way you do your City Council liaison appointments, sometimes you'll do them in open session if there's time, other times if there hasn't been time, you'll give those assignments to us and we send it out in notes to council. So, not trying to put any undue pressure at this workshop, saying you've got a little bit of time.
Okay.
Love to do that, though, this month.
Yep.
And then the subcommittee will place between March and May. So again, meeting with the subcommittee, analyzing and looking at all the, the different aspects of these boards, one by one individually during that time. And then we would bring back the subcommittee recommendations to the full council in either June or August.
And just to be fully transparent, PJ, no pressure, but I would, this is something that I've been really interested in, and I would really like to serve on it for a second. Yes, no. I really want to be on it. As a matter of fact, if I may be, again, fully transparent, I have been asking for this discussion and this process since I got back on council in twenty-two. So it's something that I feel very strongly about. I've been, not only is this my tenth year on the council, but I started attending city meetings back in the early two thousands. I've always been very engaged. When I was a citizen, I served on several of those commissions. And so it's something that I've seen both as a member, as a community member, and as a City Council member. So I would really like to make a very powerful case, if I may, to be on that subcommittee.
That was pretty compelling right there.
But was, but was it illustrious?
It was illustrious, just like Crystal.
I have a question. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And very thorough, so I really appreciate that. And you told me this before, but I can't remember. Why is ENC Alliance not included in all of that? Because we do make appointments to get board.
So, that's a great case, and I'm going to go ahead. And again, transparent's been the word here. I didn't think of that, so we can definitely add that to the... Yeah.
Okay, I knew, I knew there was a difference at one time, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
But ENC Alliance also is a nonprofit board, so the city doesn't create them. We have appointment authority, but it's not our board.
Right, but there are other boards like that too, right, so...
They probably be one of the other ones.
Right, but we still have to appoint, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think we have three members up there.
Yeah, and that's certainly something that we can add, just to see what makes sense, but I will definitely note that.
And I know that's been kind of working with them to see how the appointment should be made as well. So speaking about the bylaws, do you offhand know when the last time any of them were updated?
What, for boards and commissions? So I think that's something that would have to be brought back to this subcommittee as part of that analysis and evaluation.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of the package. That's to be reviewed by this, by this group.
My pleasure.
Whoever's on it, I'll still...
Well, that's why, I would love to be a part of that board. I've done some trainings for the government regarding that. I've worked with Rick on it, and I just have a lot of passion when it comes to the board and working with our communities who want to work with us to make Ringville a better place.
Okay.
I'll also serve on the Downtown Government Partnership Board. I don't know that that needs to be added, I just wanted to mention it.
But I don't think the council makes the appointments there, so that's probably one that we would not...
I was appointed by, by that board, I wanted to mention it, I just wanted to...
Yeah, so...
I do have a question. So Valerie, the primarily, the primary function of the subcommittee would be towards the advisory board? That's what we basically have?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I, I too am very happy to hear this presentation and be able to first learn about the appointments and when they were established, and your presentation was very clear to be able to understand that. And in sitting in some of the boards and commissions that I'm liaisoned for, there've been any questions that arose? There've been a couple of situations that came to mind, and this helps clarify for me the road ahead. And I, I do think that we have quite a bit of work in front of us to do, and it's very heated. So I too am very interested in being able to work with the subcommittee to see how we can improve the process and improve the boards. I do have concerns about the number of members and the ability to be able to appoint as some boards are, have appointments based on the liaison, but then others have a rotation of everybody. So being able to have some uniformity here, and then looking at the turn ring. And one thing I've found in being a liaison for the youth council is they need something so much different than maybe something like a Human Relations Council. And wanting them to just be able to be rock stars in the community. There's so much that they have in them that they can do and contribute, and I just feel like what we have for them right now isn't, you know, the, the motivation or the opportunity to do what they can do. When I look at other leadership trainings for teens and different things that are going on, so really want to see them be successful and do some really different dynamic and innovative things.
And if I may, as far as that appointment policy, I don't know if anybody in this room was part of the city at the time that was done. Except me.
Most of them weren't.
So, I was here when that was, I was on the council.
Perspective, you know?
When that was done in two thousand and ten. And the reason that that was changed and why it was changed for only certain boards is they were called quote-unquote "power boards." And prior to that, you probably know all this history. Prior to that, unfortunately, the liaison, for instance, to the Recre, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you were very pro-development, you would stack it with the contractors and developers. And then, and that actually happened for years with that specific board. And it was an effort to bring diversity to our boards. And so certain boards at that point were given those rotating schedules rather than letting them be the liaison, because the liaisons were packing them with people favorable to their point of view. And I think that was, I think that had some advance, some real benefits, because I think diversity, just as it's the strength of our nation and our city, diversity is the strength of our boards. And so diversity is good, diversity of perspectives and diversity of walks of life. I do think, though, when you talk about trying to be consistent, it can be a little confusing. And so, but, but I, but I, I do know that that's why that was done, and I do think it served a very good purpose.
Yeah, and I think we should, I mean, whoever's on this, on this subcommittee should come into this. Everything's on tape. I mean, even to the point, I mean, Hogswood, even to the point of even meeting. I mean, I just say...
That was a question.
I mean, yeah.
That's how we got the multi-months.
Again, whoever's coming in this room, we're going to be real honest. Because this is, it's not just, because the staff spends a lot of time doing this too. It shouldn't revolve around staff on any means, but ultimately, you know, we want to make this productive, not only for the citizens that are serving on that, but we also want to make it productive for the staff that's actually serving.
Well, and when Rick was doing what he did, there was a lot of boards and commissions that were doing the exact same thing, right? And so it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense for us to have two different boards doing the exact same thing when we could combine them and create the Multimodal Transportation Committee as opposed to having them do things that staff is doing one presentation here, staff's doing another presentation here, and you've got two different boards that are doing something different. So, I mean, I think he did a really good job with consolidating some of those boards and making sure that they were, they mesh better. But I do think that there's a lot of different changes that can be made. And I think it's important to look and really look at the purpose of each of those boards so you have a clear understanding of why it was selected to have X number of board members there, what the purpose of that board is. And maybe we'll find through this analysis that those weren't correct. Or maybe they've changed since there, maybe there's, not that they're not important, but there may not be as much of a need as there was when these boards were formed many years ago.
Also, Michael, what about the aspect of the staff liaison being defined by their job description? Would the committee also be able to speak to that? Because I'm, I'm just wondering in terms of, if it's tied to someone's job description, but they are not affected in that role, how do we fix that?
And that, that is, I'll be, I'll rule that one. That's on, that's on the City Manager, City Manager's Office and the supervisors up and down the chain to be able, hope those people count. I mean, that's, that's, that's an HR issue. To make sure that if they're not doing their job, then they, they need to make sure that they're doing it.
So just so I, I'm clear, so say for example, Sustainability Coordinator, the person that would be hired for that position, there also could be something included in their job description that says you'll be the staff liaison for the Multimodal...
Yes, yes.
No, she just gives an example.
Yeah, and just an example, it could be, but that wouldn't happen, but, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So it's built into...
That's right, exactly, that's what they're, they're hired to, to do.
All right. You good?
Yeah, that concludes it.
All right, so I guess next step will be for me to, because I'd like to speak to the other council members, students who else is interested, because I know Tommy wasn't here, and Les is not here also, and see what they're interested in. And then I guess probably, I'll make, I'll probably say by the end of this week, make a determination of who's going to be on that board, and then...
Yeah, and then we can...
Get rolling, hit the ground running.
All right.
Is it, you should have a discussion amongst us who are here, who are already here, because, or, or should we just look this up? Regardless of the subcommittee, again, I do hope that I'm on it. I think it's important for all council members to feel that they have some say...
That's why you say he's going to wait.
Yeah, I want to talk, I want to talk to both of them so they're, they can have, I can hear what they're...
Oh, no, I'm talking about some say on boards and commissions. You know, the subcommittee should, I think the subcommittee's going to do it at a granular level, but I think that all of us at council, you know, may have something to say about, you know, the boards, you know, just in a general way, not at a granular level. But is that something we should do today, or wait till the subcommittee's report?
I can give you my opinion on that. Because ultimately, if you've got three council members that are on this subcommittee, I would expect those three council members to call the other council members and ask their opinion. But I mean, not only is that a good way to engage with each other, it's, it's the most proper way to make sure that you are thinking about what others are thinking when we're sitting around them. See what I'm saying? So I mean, so yeah, so just because, this shouldn't be laid just at the feet of three individuals, because ultimately, it has to come back to council and it has to be approved. But those three individuals, whoever they may be, should have the expectation to be calling up, you know, each other and just talking about, hey, this is what we're talking about, this is what I'm thinking, are you okay with it, so we can make sure we get all perspectives. Ultimately, you just have to have representatives, but they are not. They represent everybody, they should be talking to each other.
Okay.
Agreed.
I was wondering what that...
I am so hungry. Coin check. Where are the coin check?
All right, are we good?
Are we good? Any additional questions? That concludes the presentation.
Great job, great job.
Thank you.
The next order of business is adjourned. Did I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Set.
All right, motion made. Mayor Pro Tim Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn, all of us, the papers say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. We are adjourned.